Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a joint meeting of the Montclair and Glen Ridge Planning Boards. Notice of this building is published in the local papers and also posted in the town halls of our respective communities. First up, we have roll call.
Glenn, for Glen Ridge. Dawson is absent. Fields?
Here.
Higerty?
Here.
Mahotra? Absent. Councilperson Morrow?
Here.
Robert Morrow?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Roll call's absent. Torano?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Chair Mason?
Here.
You have a quorum chair.
Chair Winn?
Here.
Vice Chair Brodak?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Mr. Brandon?
Counselor Schleger?
Here.
Ms. Willis?
Here.
Mr. Rooney?
Here.
Mr. Ian Wally's excused. Ms. Lochman?
Here.
Mr. Barr? He's excused. And Mr. Gilmer?
Here.
Okay.
All right. So we'll get right to our main event. We have the continuation of the presentation hearing on One Bay Urban Renewal.
Okay.
Good evening. For the record, Glenn Pantel, as you know, the attorney for the applicant, One Bay Urban Renewal LLC. We have with us this evening to follow up on the testimony that we presented at the last meeting. First, our architect, Alan Kopelson, will present some revised architectural plans by way of rendered exhibits that have been prepared to provide the additional... Rick? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Brandon just arrived, and Ms. Lochman recused herself.
Okay, great.
Please proceed.
Yep, great. So as I was saying, we have with us who will be testifying initially, our architect, Alan Kopelson, presenting some architectural revisions, including the building sign above the entrance that the board was interested in seeing, some additional detail on the cornice at the top of the building that some members were interested in seeing, as well as a proposed canopy which is being installed by virtue of an eight-foot cantilevered structure above the driveway immediately adjacent to the main entrance to the building. That testimony will be followed by Corey Chase, our traffic consultant, who will summarize his analysis and findings for the board, our site engineer, Brad Bowler, who testified previously, as did, of course, Mr. Kopelson, will present some brief testimony on some relatively minor site revisions that are made to the plans. And then lastly, we have with us Jennifer Stoughton, who will present the rather detailed sign package that you provided. And in that regard, I do want to note that the intention, and I believe we have succeeded in that respect, is to have the signed package, A, comply with all the requirements of the redevelopment plan, and B, we attempt to provide the detail that was suggested at the last meeting in this 20 or so sheet package of materials provided to you, showing in considerable detail all the different signs and their particular purposes and proposed locations. So if there's no questions for me at this point, what I'd like to do is proceed with Mr. Kopelson, who's previously been sworn and qualified.
Please proceed.
Thank you.
State your full name for the record, spell your last name.
Yes, Alan Kopelson, K-O-P-E-L-S-O-N.
Your stone droplet, please proceed.
Thank you. And by the way, we're up to exhibit, our next exhibit will be A5.
This is revised one, Glenn.
Yeah, exactly. So but the...
I don't know if we can do something adjusting lights.
Can you turn the lights? They're over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. For the purpose of this meeting, and I won't spend much time on the sign because we have
a sign person will spend more time on it, but the sign is located right here above the entrance. It's very hard to see exactly what it says, but I think in yet another graphic that the sign people will present, show it exactly how it reads. So that was one thing that we've had to come back with, and we've done that in terms of the sign, where it would go, and it does conform to all the requirements of your current ordinance.
Okay. So what I'd like to do for the record, if we could, is that we'll call out this package of architectural, revised architectural renderings as A5, and then refer to each slide as you testify. So the first slide that you just referred to is elevation, architectural sheet, A6.
Right.
Okay. And but this is now all part of exhibit A5, which is the package of revised architectural plans.
Okay. The next issue that came up, if you recall, was the entrance, where originally we had the portico or covered canopy that came right about this point where the hand is on the rendering. What we've done is we've actually extended it nine feet beyond that point, beyond the curb, and because this column is actually one foot in back of the curb so that a vehicle doesn't hit it, or we hope it doesn't hit it. And the four columns will support this new portico, which will come out over the top of an automobile, allowing both the passenger and driver to get out under a covered area. And then lastly, is the top all around the building, the corners of the building. There was a question as to what it looked like and the dimensions of it and where it goes. So first, on this rendering, A6, I point out that it travels all the way around, all four sides of the building. And I'll go to the next image, which is also part of A5. Why isn't it coming out? Well, okay, okay. This is A5A, drawing A5A, exhibit, again, part of A5. So actually, let me just skip this one for one moment and go to the next one, because the next one has dimensions on it, which was asked of us to actually come up with the dimensions. So the cornice dimension is corbeled out. It comes out one foot...
Excuse me, just for the record, so we're now referring to...
Oh, we're A5, drawing A5B.
Okay, which is the third slide in exhibit A5.
Correct. So it comes out a foot and a half beyond the face of the building. It's brick, and it's corbeled out, as you see here. And the dimension on it is two foot four inches in height. And again, this is the element, as you look at it head-on. Oh, and here's our sign, by the way. You can see this is a better rendition of the sign and what it's going to say. Again, the detail of it will be spoken to by our sign expert. So this is the front entrance, and if I go back one sheet to A5A, you can see that this is the side of the building, and the cornice, again, follows all the way around the building. So as I explained our last time, the treatment for the front of the building is the same as the back and the two sides of the building. There's no variation in the treatment of materials or the way they're handled in terms of the presentation of how they will look to the observer, whether you're on the hospital side or the residential side of the building. So I hope this clarifies any questions that anyone had as far as what this cornice would look like. Are there any questions? Is it clear? Is it okay now?
No, it's much better. I thank you.
Okay, thank you.
For the additional detail. It is a lot clearer.
And if I have any other questions about the sign or the front or the portico, feel free to ask.
Seeing none.
None? None?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Chair, want to ask for questions from the public on this one?
Yeah. Does anybody from the public have any questions of the architect about the details that he's provided? Nope, doesn't appear so.
Great, thank you. Our next witness, as I indicated, is Corey Chase, our traffic consultant, who has not yet testified.
Please write in. Do you swear or affirm testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, nothing untrue? Say your full name for the record, spell your last name.
Corey Chase, last name C-H-A-S-E.
Could you please describe for the board your professional qualifications and the nature of your involvement in this project?
I'm a project manager with Atlantic Traffic and Design Engineers, where I've worked for the past 15 years. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and seven other states. I have a bachelor's of science in civil engineering from the University of Massachusetts, and I've been qualified as an expert in traffic engineering before over 100 municipalities.
Great. So we would ask that Mr. Chase's testimony be admitted as expert testimony in the field of traffic engineering?
We will.
Okay, was that a yes?
That was a yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I couldn't hear. So could you please proceed to describe for the board the nature of your analysis and your conclusions with respect to the traffic issues that you did investigate?
Certainly. As Mr. Pantel mentioned, we did prepare a traffic impact analysis to analyze the traffic impacts associated with the proposed medical office building. It's last revised March 15, 2018. Just to recap a little bit, the testimony that Mr. Bowler provided at the last hearing, as part of the redevelopment of the subject property, the two existing unsignalized access points to the former nursing school will be closed, and a signalized access point will be constructed. The existing three-leg unsignalized intersection with Highland Avenue, Bay Avenue, and Walnut Crescent, the proposed access to the medical office building will form the southbound leg into the signalized intersection. In addition, as part of those improvements, we're going to be constructing exclusive left-hand turn lanes on the northbound Highland Avenue approach, the westbound Bay Avenue approach, and the eastbound Walnut Crescent approach. There will also be pedestrian crosswalks and accommodations on all four approaches to the intersection. The existing mid-block signalized pedestrian crossing that currently provides crossing from the former nursing school to the hospital will be eliminated as part of the development proposal, and all the pedestrian accommodations will be at the existing signalized intersection. We did prepare a traffic impact analysis to assess the overall impacts of the traffic generated as a result of the proposed medical office building on the adjacent roadway network, as well as analyze the impacts on the operational conditions at the intersection of the installation of the traffic signal. The analysis that we prepared was conservative in that we didn't take any credit for the former nursing school, approximately 68,000 square foot building. We're actually reducing the overall building size as part of the redevelopment, so it's going from approximately 68,000 square feet to 45,735 square feet. Now, you could, they are different uses, one being a nursing school, but it did have other offerings in it. It had a daycare center and some other amenities that went along with the school. So we would anticipate that it would be a comparable traffic generator to what's proposed, so that the net would likely be a wash. However, to be conservative, we didn't take any credit for that traffic generated by the former nursing school. We found that with the traffic generated by the proposed medical office building and with the consideration of the installation of the traffic signal at the existing unsignalized intersection, it's actually going to improve the operational traffic conditions at that intersection. Currently, the northbound Walnut Crescent approach to the intersection operates at a failing level of service during peak times. That's going to improve to level of service B with consideration of the signalized operation and the addition of traffic generated by the proposed medical office. The adjacent unsignalized intersections, Walnut Crescent and Clermont, Walnut Crescent and Walnut Street to the north, are calculated to operate at level of service C or better during each of the peak hours. So those are considered to be acceptable levels of service, even with the consideration of the traffic generated by the proposed medical office building, and no credit taken for the former use and occupancy of the site. The site will meet the township parking requirements inclusive of the 42 valet stalls that were testified to last time as far as operational conditions go. We did review the onsite circulation with Mr. Bowler's office and found that acceptable circulation will be provided throughout for both delivery vehicles as well as passenger cars circulating the site. I didn't have any other additional testimony, Glenn. If you felt like I missed anything, or I'd be happy to answer any questions by the board or the board's professionals regarding the traffic study, circulation, the signalized intersection.
What's the definition of a C? You mentioned that Walnut Crescent is categorized as a C section. What is the definition of that?
It's based on seconds of delay. So they categorize levels of service based on levels of delay. Typically, they operate in letter grades, A being the least amount of delay and a level of service F being the most excessive amount of delay. What F means is that the capacity at the intersection is actually exceeded by the volume at the intersection. So typically, in these conditions, a level of service E in some cases is considered acceptable. In all cases, a level of service D or better is considered acceptable. So these intersections are actually operating at better than that. So they're operating with no real perceptible delay to the average driver.
Thank you.
What's the current level of operation for the non-signalized intersections?
They are currently level of service C, and they're going to maintain at level of service C or better. So there's no degradations as a result of this development?
Over here. I think it's called Walnut Crescent or Highland Avenue, northbound, the new signalized intersection.
It is.
Is that road wide enough for three lanes?
It is. There's no road widening proposed, given the existing cartway width. We do have sufficient width to stripe in the northbound left turn lane, as well as a shared through right turn lane, and then there will be one lane going southbound. There is, and I should have mentioned this in my direct, there is minor road widening proposed along the site frontage to accommodate that westbound left turn lane along the site frontage along Bay Avenue, but that's the only actual physical road widening that we're going to be doing.
So coming south on Walnut Crescent, you left turn only into the parking lot?
South...
Southbound on Walnut Crescent, there's another only left turn lane?
Yes.
That's going to go into the parking lot?
Correct.
Is Bay Avenue a county road?
Bay Avenue... Bay Avenue is a county road from our discussions with the county up to the municipal line. At the municipal line, the county's ownership of that road ends, so the intersection is actually not under county jurisdiction.
Let me say up to. So which side is, to be clear, what side of Bay Avenue is county and what side is not?
My apologies. The east side of the corporate line, so from the, our property, heading in an eastbound direction, easterly direction, is under county jurisdiction. As you approach, heading west, once you go beyond the corporate line, west towards the intersection, it becomes municipal jurisdiction.
Just to point out, I've had conversations with Montclair Township's Department of Community Services, and in their opinion, the control of the light is really, it should be a county light because it's controlling traffic along Bay Avenue, a county, a county road. So they would like the county to take jurisdiction of that signal.
So have you also received the April 22 report from NV5, specifically Mr. Fischinger, the traffic consultant who reviewed this on behalf of the Montclair Planning Board?
I did.
Yeah, could you comment on his comments?
We can agree to all of the comments contained in the traffic and circulation comment section of Mr. Fischinger's letter. The first comment is sort of just touching on what we were just discussing as to who has jurisdiction over the signalized intersection. We will agree to provide an additional crossing along the Walnut Crescent approach to Clermont Avenue to add that additional crossing in a north-south direction. He also commented about truck traffic. Now, we don't expect any tractor-trailer deliveries associated with the proposed medical office building. The deliveries would primarily be single-unit trucks, UPS and FedEx vehicles, vehicles of that nature. So no large tractor-trailer deliveries are anticipated with the facility. It is noted that trucks are restricted along Clermont Avenue, so, you know, any deliveries to the facility would have to abide by the existing truck restrictions along the adjacent roadway network. And he also asked that we consider doing an all-way stop control at the Walnut Crescent, Walnut Street, Roswell Terrace intersection, and that's something that we can agree to do. The Federal Highway Administration publishes what they call warrants to evaluate whether all-way stop control would be required, and we will evaluate those existing traffic volumes and the proposed to see if they meet those thresholds to require all-way stop control and submit that for his review.
Thank you.
Okay, one more.
Hi. Do you think it's important to add a crosswalk along Bay Avenue further down to get to the medical office building?
In my professional opinion, we like to concentrate the crossings at actual intersections. We typically discourage mid-block crossing because they're unexpected and they violate driver expectancy. It's a much safer crossing maneuver to do it at the signalized intersection. So in my professional opinion, I would discourage adding an additional crossing midway down Bay Avenue.
I agree with what you're saying, but I don't think that the average person is going to walk all the way down up to that section where you have all the crosswalks. So do you think it's better to encourage a crosswalk there than not have a crosswalk and just people walking across that street?
Yeah, actually, maybe I can help with that. At the last meeting, there was a suggestion about putting some fencing up along the boundary of the medical office building fronting on Bay Avenue to just, to make that movement that you just alluded to impossible. And unless somebody's going to engage in fence jumping, it doesn't seem too likely. So we are prepared to install such fencing along that boundary to discourage, if not totally eliminate, that movement.
Again, I agree with you, but there are homes a little bit further down. There's, it was brought up, I think, by, I think it was a resident who said, there's a park across the street, just a little further down on the same side of where the hospital is, and there are people who will want to cross the street down there. So I think it's, I'm strongly suggesting a crosswalk somewhere further down.
When you say further down, you mean further to the east of the medical office, proposed medical office building?
Somewhere in that area where it can, it can serve the purpose. I mean, you may not cross through if you're going to put a fence on that line.
Right.
But people are going to want to cross the street, whether they cut through or not cut through. I just think it's too long of a stretch from where you have the crosswalks in place now to where the end of Bay Avenue meets at the, I think there's another light or a stop sign there at the end of the corner of Ridgewood Avenue and Bay. Oh, Sherman also comes over.
It's Sherman.
Right, yes, Sherman.
You know, what we can do on that, rather than try to totally solve it this second, if the board is inclined to approve and make a condition to the effect that we would consider that in consultation with traffic consultant, you know, for the board, we're prepared to do that. It's not as if we're, you know, unequivocally opposed to it, but you heard the concern that we have. But we'd be prepared to address that with your traffic consultant if the board were so inclined to approve and make that a condition.
That would also require county approval because Bay Avenue in that area is under Essex County jurisdiction, so they would have to weigh in on that topic as well.
So what happens if we don't do that, but you see that the behaviors are such that people are doing it? Can you adjust the light?
Crosswalk is certainly something that could be added at a later date. It doesn't have to be constructed at the inception. I think that if I hear the concerns correctly, that it's not necessarily people going to and from the hospital and the medical office building, but existing pedestrian circulation maneuvers in the area. So certainly, it's something that could be watched, and if it's flagged as a problem in the future, you know, that crosswalk could certainly be added at a later date.
Counsel, if a fence is put up, can we make that a condition of approval that the Glen Ridge HPC gets a sign off on the actual fence detail?
Yes, we can do that.
I, oh, I'm sorry. I have one more question. With moving the light to that section, you said right now, the intersection further down Walnut, you said level C, and it's going to remain a level C. Don't you think that needs a little bit more improvement? I mean, there's a ton of backup over there, coming off of Clermont, coming down to Walnut, and turning on to Bay.
Right now, that existing light only functions to accommodate the pedestrian crossing. So I've sat through that light several times, and what happens is someone will actually push the push button on either side of the crosswalk. The light turns red and actually stays red for a fairly substantial amount of time to accommodate that crossing, much longer than you would actually need at an existing signalized intersection. But it's unique in that the light is really only there to accommodate pedestrians. So I think that when they designed it, they wanted to give ample amount of time to get people across. So that light stays red for a substantial amount of time, and that is really what causes those backups that you see on Walnut Crescent that spill over into Clermont, is people are sitting here for an extended amount of time. Based on the level of service analysis that we prepared, you're going to see this intersection operate at level of service B or better, which is more than acceptable. And again, the movements from northbound Highland onto Bay and onto Walnut Crescent are actually going to improve substantially. This is a level of service F under the existing conditions, and it's going to improve to a level of service B. So these people coming northbound on Highland, they're going to see a substantial improvement in the overall circulation on the adjacent roadway network by not having to deal with the backup and traffic along Walnut Crescent and Bay.
But what about, and that's great, but what about the folks who get stopped? There's a stop sign currently where the crosswalk is, there you go. Because those folks wait a long time as well, and I'm not sure if that's because the timing of the light, and if that's going to improve, then everything's going to improve. But you're saying that that is a C, and it's going to remain a C.
That's correct. And actually, you brought up a good point that I should have mentioned, that the light itself is going to create gaps in traffic for those people that aren't there now. Right now, the only gaps are created when somebody pushes the push button to utilize a crossing. It's going to operate as a standard traffic signal, so it's going to go green, yellow, red on a timed sequence. What that's going to do is it's going to create gaps in traffic for those people that are coming southbound to Walnut Crescent that aren't there currently. So while we didn't see any improvement in the calculations, we didn't see any degradations either, in reality, it's likely going to improve over what it is currently.
Thank you.
Well, what I wanted to say before was, when we talk about warrants, sometimes the warrants might not be there. So what happens if we don't get the four-way stop sign intersection?
Our analysis didn't include that evaluation. So our analysis assumed no four-way stop in place. So the results that are in the traffic study wouldn't change. If we do determine that it is warranted, we would, as part of that warrant analysis, just conduct an updated level of service to see what the differential is with and without the four-way stop, and then you guys can make an educated decision as to whether or not you want to implement it or not.
Right. I'm not arguing for or against. I just want the board to be aware that that's one of those things that may not happen. Question here?
Yes, I have a question. The report has a section on future traffic conditions and other area developments, and there's a projected 1% background growth, I guess that's built into your analysis. And my question is whether or not this 1% growth pattern is consistent with a proposed development on Walton Street of a 98-unit residential complex. Would that 1% be sufficient to accommodate that?
Yeah, we, those developments such as that would be accommodated by the background growth. It's not going to substantially alter the traffic patterns in the neighborhood with the development of that size and given its location. So that 1% is sufficient. And I mentioned as well, we didn't take any credit for, you know, the existing nursing school. So there is a factor of safety built into our analysis. We just add it all on, on all of our traffic onto the existing conditions to evaluate a worst-case scenario.
Other questions from either board?
Yeah, just, if you could just go back to the intersection of Walnut Crescent and Clermont and just walk us through the movements there and the lanes.
Walnut Crescent and Claremont?
Yeah.
We're not proposing any changes to this intersection.
Okay, but didn't you just say there would be a left turn?
There is going to be, as you go, I'm going to say east, west to east, along Walnut Crescent. As you approach Bay Avenue, we're installing a left-turn lane along the subject property.
Oh, okay, okay. Understood. I thought it was, okay. That makes more sense. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, one question. So here, we're talking about traffic and overall circulation as well, pedestrian circulation, correct?
Correct.
In terms of access points, if folks are at this medical office building, are there any paths or ways for folks to access the road outside of the complex here? Or would all the traffic in and out need to come through the four-way traffic signal, even foot traffic, let's say?
The intent is to direct all vehicular and pedestrian traffic in and out of this access point, to concentrate those movements in a single location. You're going to direct all the people to the signalized pedestrian crossings at the signal. So if they want to go back and forth between the hospital and the medical office building, they're all concentrated in one area rather than having multiple entrance and exit points onto the adjacent network.
And it may be tricky to determine now, but are there large spaces in the building that would lead to there either being events or small conferences where we would expect an increase in the flow of individuals coming in and out of the building? Or no, is that just not?
That's not the intention at this time. It's going to be a medical office building.
Great.
Will pedestrians have control of the light at any point?
There will be pedestrian push buttons as part of the intersection design, yes.
Could that cause the same problem you alluded to before? That it's, would that be an extended time period?
What it does is the crossings function with the existing light. So you'll be allowed to cross when certain movements are going. So there won't be a phase, we call it an all-red phase, where the entire intersection goes red and just pedestrians cross. That won't occur. They'll actually occur with the existing traffic movements as they go.
Any other questions from the board? Are there questions from the public concerning this witness's testimony?
I'm, sorry, Carmel Lockman. I live at 26 Walnut Street, which is diagonal from the upper left-hand corner of the proposed medical office building. Yeah, right there. So you had mentioned that you were going to do an analysis of that intersection of Walnut Street and Walnut Crescent, I guess it is. And it struck me that what you're saying is that if there's any change in the volume of traffic, that that may warrant a four-way stop sign. Did I hear you correctly?
We were asked to, we evaluated in its current configuration. We were asked by the township traffic consultant to consider if this intersection meets the volume warrants to install a four-way stop, which we're agreeing to do.
The volume warrants, you mean the number of cars going through that intersection?
Correct.
Okay, so that's really not the problem. The problem is that, and I don't know why this is, but people do not stop at the stop sign that's on the left-hand side, yeah, that stop sign. They consistently blow through that stop sign. So it's dangerous. And I've seen many times people beeping their horns, almost hitting people that have the right of way coming down Walnut Crescent, which is, in my view, I would advocate for a stop sign on Walnut Crescent and let them go through because that's the natural thing that they do, is blow through the stop sign at Walnut Street. So what I was hoping for is that you'd be looking at doing a four-way stop sign. At least then, you know, hopefully the Walnut Crescent people will stop, and maybe the Walnut Street people will too at times. But believe me, that north, whatever it is, that corner up there, they do not stop at that stop sign.
Any questions?
All right. So I was asking, the nature of the question was, are they just looking at volume or are they looking at safety issues? Because that's a real safety issue.
The warrants are volume-based, and it sounds like it's an enforcement issue that could be dealt with accordingly if we've determined that the volume warrants aren't meant to install the four-way stop.
I really don't think the volumes are going to change that much, or maybe you think that they are. Do you think that the volumes are going to change that much?
You'll be able to comment later when you get to the comment part.
Right. Okay, well, I'll just point to get out that the problem is that that's a safety issue, not a volume issue. And I mean, I've told the town about it, and nothing has gotten done. But since we're doing this redevelopment now, it strikes me, it's another time to bring this up. Okay, another question, as you said, I thought you said, that nothing was being done on the intersection of Claremont and Walnut Crescent. But I thought that you were going to stripe a crosswalk going from the west side of Walnut Crescent over to, right there. There's no striped crosswalk there at the moment. It's a natural path for people to walk. And I would, I thought that part of the plan was that you would stripe a crosswalk.
We are, and I apologize for not being clear. I was referring to installing a left-turn lane. I think there was a little bit of confusion as to where this left-turn lane on Walnut Crescent was going to be located. But we are, in fact, proposing to provide a pedestrian crossing on that approach to the intersection.
Okay. All right. So new topic. My next question is, how long is the construction of the medical office building going to take? Maybe that's not your question, but...
Yeah, that's not my level of expertise, sorry.
Okay. So while it's being constructed, there's lots of big trucks that are going in and out into the area that's now the old nursing school. Are you aware of what the nature of those streets are on the master plan that Montclair has? What kind of streets they are?
I am, and I would expect that truck traffic into and out of the facility, even during construction, would be Bay Avenue to Ridgewood to Bloomfield. That seems like the most desirable path to get larger vehicles into and out of the site.
But my question was, are you aware of what our master plan calls those streets?
As far as classification goes?
Yes.
I'm not.
You're not. Okay, so Claremont Avenue and Walnut Street are what they call town thoroughfares, which indicates a higher level of traffic is allowed on those streets. However, Walnut Crescent is a neighborhood thoroughfare. Yet, what I've seen even thus far, living on that corner for 13 years, is that trucks routinely go on Walnut Crescent all the way through Oxford Street. So they routinely go through a residential area. And I would like to see something that would prevent them, especially during this construction time.
Excuse me, is this a question?
You know...
Let me, let me jump in. I have a suggestion, Mr. Chairman. The, I think one of the conditions we should have is, we should have a developers' agreement. And as part of developer agreement, we should be discussing, these are very good questions about how the traffic and staging is going to occur, and it should be done in consultation with professional staff.
Unless anyone disagrees, huh?
No, I think that's a good idea because it's not just, it's not just a developer obligation, I don't think. I think there is a, there's a level of enforcement of traffic controls that is beyond the developer's control, that, that really is beyond the scope of what these boards here do also.
I agree, but I want to point it out, John, that, living in the neighborhood, you see things. And from a practical point of view, you're not going to have a policeman standing there in the corner giving tickets.
That's, that's why we do a developers' agreement. Then the city, the city will take responsibility for that. It's beyond the jurisdiction and they can't abort.
And maybe, and maybe there needs to be an enforcement blitz at that corner to discourage. Long-term. I mean, but, but with respect to the developer making, making changes, I see their options as somewhat limited. And that's really what we're talking about here.
Okay.
So those, so while your comments are, are well-taken, there's only but so much that we can do here about it, as you know.
No.
And that really, they need to be focused also at the town and also at the, you know, the people who deal with the traffic control, the police department, to alert them to the safety issue that you are first.
Yeah, they're going to tell them what streets to come in, when they can come, what the conflict is.
Right.
It won't solve everything, but it'll at least control a lot of it.
But that's, that's all that they can do. I, you know, I think, I'm 99% sure that the reason why their trucks are going that route is because they're trying to avoid the congestion at Grove Street and Walnut Street and get around, get around the traffic that circles around there.
Right, to get around the traffic.
So that they can go out Grove Street to hit the highway.
Plus, the natural flow of the trucks is to go up Claremont Avenue. Yet, they make them go through Walnut Street, and there's an island there, and they can't turn. So it's, from a practical point of view, it's the most, you know, ridiculous layout.
Right.
And now we're looking, my point is, we're looking at this, we're looking at a traffic person, we have our own guy. Somebody needs to do something about this. So I just wanted to point it out. Maybe it's not a question.
Yeah, and by the way, what I'd like to add is, responding to the comment regarding so-called developers' agreement, actually, this project will have a redevelopment agreement, and the sort of issue that was just raised can readily be addressed in a redevelopment agreement.
Awesome. Then we just add that provision that we stated.
For the start, why don't we just make it a condition that during the period of construction, at least, that there is a no-trucks sign placed in appropriate places?
But that's part of the problem. There's a no-truck sign that doesn't let them go up Claremont Avenue. So all the trucks go to Walnut Street where they can't turn.
Well, I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting adding another one on the other, on the local streets.
What should happen is they should take down the sign for Claremont Avenue and let the trucks go up that way.
But again, the developer can't address.
It's a town issue, but we're town people.
It's a town issue.
And that's a council decision, too.
Yep.
So maybe that's something that we can bring to the council's attention on behalf of the board, and we can address that at our next, our next meeting.
Thank you.
Going back to, just to clarify, when you said that you were going to evaluate the intersection of Walnut, Walnut Crescent, Roswell, are you going to evaluate that taking into account the increased traffic from the fully developed project?
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any more questions from the public of this witness? Yes, sir. Please come up.
Good evening. Joe Fischinger with NV5, the board's traffic consultant. Corey, to start, were you, did you prepare a traffic study for the parking lot for the hospital? And are you going to provide any testimony with that regard?
We did prepare a separate narrative for the addition of the hospital parking, and the conclusions were that, really, that parking is going to accommodate the existing demand that's currently circulating the adjacent roadway network and relocate that to the proposed parking. So there's not going to be any perceptible changes in traffic as a result of that parking area.
And as part of that, did you review the operation of the gate into the, that parking area? I believe the requirement was 40 feet of storage capacity, and you provide 40 on the nose. Do you believe that's adequate to accommodate the proposed operation?
We do believe that's adequate, yes.
And then I assume you've had a chance to take a look through the rest of my comment letters. I'm not going to go through each item individually, but is there, I guess we'll do it this way, is there any items that you will not comply with or agree to?
Not in regards to the items that I'm testifying to. I know that there's going to be some further discussion on signage forthcoming, but everything traffic-related in regards to either the, the traffic signal design, the warrant analysis, we can agree to all of those items.
And with regard to the traffic, I apologize if you said this. Would you agree to design the signal to Essex County standards, even though the jurisdiction is still up for a discussion, I guess is the right word at this point?
Certainly.
All right. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Pintel, let's just mark the traffic report as A6, and then the memo from NV5 dated March 21, 2018 as B7.
Okay, so we'll mark as A6.
That's the March 15.
March 15, the traffic report.
And that's A7.
Okay, and A7 will be the NV5, April 22 report.
Okay.
Okay, and it should also, I think, be noted for the record that in the course of his testimony, Mr. Chase referred on occasion to the site layout exhibit, which is going to be part of Exhibit A8, which is the revised engineering exhibits. It'll be slide three of that set of exhibits that Mr. Bowler will be addressing in a little more detail.
It's a new one.
Okay, I'm sorry, the NV5 report is B7?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We have one more question?
I just had a question on the, when we mentioned the Essex County standards for the light fixtures and things, is, is there any discussion of the, you know, the treatment of the light, of the traffic signals? Or are they, you know, the standard stainless steel? Do they, are they contextual in the, the treatment or how, the aesthetic of it?
They're typically stainless steel. I mean, I have seen powder-coated signals, but that also becomes a maintenance issue, maintaining the powder coating and keeping them up. So typically, you know, 95% of the signals we install are just stainless steel.
It just may be something that the boards want to consider in terms of the overall look of the area. It makes a big difference from intersection to intersection with the type of materials used. So just put that out there.
Any other questions?
Are you suggesting something?
Yeah, I prefer the painted coated steel look. It has a more historical kind of look. On the Glen Ridge side, it goes a little bit more on that gas lamp kind of look. So I would just recommend that that be explored.
Put it as, are you suggesting it as a condition?
If it's in the purview of the, the planning board, I'm not quite sure how that...
Should we send it?
I would, my only comment would be that ultimately, the county or the municipality are going to have to maintain the signal after it's constructed. So in the event that there's ever a knockdown or things like that, when they're powder-coated, it becomes more of an issue because you, you obviously don't want three powder-coated traffic signal mast arms and one stainless steel one up there. But those are the ones that are readily available in the event of emergency. So just, just something for the board to consider.
And we can go either way with it. If the board wants to require that it be powder-coated, if, you know, in consultation with your engineer, you know, we're fine with that.
I believe the county does do powder-coated.
It's on Bloomfield Avenue, right at the intersection of Ridgewood Ave.
Yeah.
And Glen Ridge has a particular look with its gas lamps, so we should continue to try and maintain that feel throughout the campus area.
Yeah.
I got it.
Good idea.
Good. Other questions? Right, counsel?
Great, thank you very much. Our next witness is Brad Bowler, our site engineer, who testified, of course, at the last hearing and remains under oath. And he'll be presenting some relatively minor revisions, but revisions that we want to bring to the board's attention regarding overall site layout, in connection with which he'll be referring, as I indicated a moment ago, to what we will call as Exhibit A8, which is a package of four slides prepared by his office, which depict those revisions.
I think we missed seven.
Oh, because we had B, right. Okay, so we're up to now A7 instead of A8. So let's note that for the record.
Full name for the record, it's by Leslie.
Sure. Bradford Bowler, B-O-H-L-E-R.
Thank you. You're stolen, you're a...
So as you refer to these different plans, please identify each one as Slide Number One, et cetera, as part of Exhibit A7.
Okay, so I'll refer to the exhibit, this will be Slide Two, which should be the third sheet in the packet. Let me just make sure.
No, no, no.
Yes, it's the third sheet in the packet. It has, has the medical office building shown on it.
So that's the plan, exhibit entitled Site Layout Exhibit. It's the third slide in Exhibit A7.
Yes. So this, this exhibit shows, at the last hearing, we had discussed putting a fence along the parking spaces to the Bay Avenue side of the property, which is the south side of the property. So we proposed that. In addition, we also showed an upper-left-hand corner cross-section of what that would look like schematically, so that the board... look like schematically, so that the board can picture that. So on the left side of that view, would be Bay Avenue, there's the street trees and the sidewalk going from left to right, the shrubs, the evergreen shrubs that are between the sidewalk and the parking lot, and then the, the fence that would be at that location. There is some space between the fence and the curb line for some snow storage, so we don't knock the fence down, and then our parking spaces, which is the convertible on the right side of the, on the right side of the exhibit. So that's the, the only change for this plan from the previous hearing. So then the fourth slide in the packet, which shows the parking deck area.
Can I just ask if there's a picture or anything of the fence, what it looks like?
We proposed a post and rail fence, but we're open for the board's suggestions, and also I understand that the comment was about the Historic Preservation Committee reviewing that as well, so again, we're open for suggestions on those fences, we don't have a preference either way.
So it would be reviewed by the HPCs?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's do that. Tom?
Sorry, Mrs., the location of the fence, the limits of the fence, starting where and ending where?
The location of the fence would run from east to west along the parking spaces along Bay Avenue, so the entire length of that parking space run.
Is it going to start at the driveway?
It would start, there's the pocket park to the west of the parking spaces. At that, there's a parking space that faces, I guess it would be towards the intersection, and then it would run to the east all the way down Bay Avenue, and end at the perpendicular parking spaces at the end.
It's not depicted on the plan, though, is it, the location?
So technically, it's, it's on this exhibit, but you can't see it because it's a single line, so, which is why we put together the...
You can't see it with the trees?
Which is why we put together the cross-section, so that we could visually represent what that looked like.
Is there an exact point, will we have a plan that can show the exact where it actually ends, like right around the front, right around the corporate limits?
It'll run through the, the corporate limit, so it'll, again, it'll be along those parking spaces, fronting Bay Avenue.
So it'll bend around, it's not going to cut off the park?
That's correct, it'll bend around the parking spaces and follow the parking curb line.
Okay.
And really, what it is, it's to encourage pedestrians to follow the crosswalks and sidewalks.
That's correct.
Did you mention how high the fence is? Did I miss that? The height of the fence?
We would propose three and a half feet.
I think it says four, doesn't it, on your plans?
It says four on the plan.
I'm sorry, four, yes, sorry.
Is it possible to give a, say, setback from the third line, because I think that's what it's really going to follow, curb line and sidewalk line?
So I would propose it to be two feet, two to two and a half feet off of the parking spaces within the medical office building.
Not my place to have a concern, but if you're going to use a post and rail fence to stop people across the street, that's the fence that's most, that's least likely to stop men. What do you think? I know you've never seen a climb before.
I guess I understand that, but typically a four or five fence, you know, it's, you have three rails in it, you shouldn't have to sneak through. If you really want to try to go through there, that's fine, but there also is a grade change that happens between the medical office building, I mentioned that last, last hearing, that were higher, so there'd be a grade change and landscaping between that, so the combination of all three of those hopefully would prevent you from jumping that fence.
Okay. If the board's okay with it, I'm just pointing it out.
I think also the commission, the Historic Preservation Commission's going to take a look at it. Then also, along that pocket park, what's your thoughts about running some along that pocket, pocket park as well, just to prevent somebody from leaving, leaving the emergency room entrance, trying to run across the street and enjoy that park first?
Do you mean on the street side of that park?
Yeah.
We can certainly look at that, I don't think that the distance to the crosswalk is that extreme where someone would do that.
Okay.
Is there a fence on the east side of this property?
There is a board-on-board or stockade fence that runs along the entire east side of the property between the homes and the, and the medical office building proposed.
Okay, and how high is that?
That is currently six feet high, and we're proposing six feet high.
Okay, thanks.
So going back to Slide four, it's the parking deck view, it would be Site Layout Plan B of our, our rendering, showing this plan based on the last hearing with the neighbor about the, the public park in that area, so what we looked at in this area was, we provided additional evergreen trees, so now instead of a single row of evergreen trees at six to seven feet high, we proposed a double row staggered, so that it fills in at that location. We've also designated the area for the redevelopment zone square footage-wise, so that it meets the criteria, but we revised the park to eliminate the benches and the seating areas in that location, and we've provided a, a walkway path with some landscaping along that side of it as another option for the board to consider, and we hope that addresses the public comments we had at the last hearing.
Okay, so, okay, that's actually Slide four, because here's the second.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's Slide four is called out as the Site Layout Plan B. Okay. Any other changes on that?
No.
On the slide, other than the one intended to accommodate the question concerned raised by the neighbor at the last meeting?
That was the end of the changes we had made to these exhibits.
In, in that, the newly designed grass area, would you consider a path shooting the diagonal connecting where your current walkway and take that to the crosswalk?
So do you mean going from north to south, or...
That way.
East to west?
East to west, to bring you, you know, because people are naturally going to come out of that parking lot, cut across the grass towards that crosswalk.
Sure, we can do that. The goal was to, in our thought process, was to keep that path generally in the area of the designated area for the redevelopment zone, but that's not a problem to move that, if that's the, the board's wish.
So is that all you have to present on the slides?
That's correct, there, there is, sign vendor will come up and talk about the signs, but there were a number of comments from NV5 that were related to site work and site layout, so from a high-level perspective, I just want to make sure I noted that we will work with the sign vendor to revise our plans, landscaping, locations, et cetera, to reflect those locations that she proposed on her plans, that they're coordinated as part of the final set of plans.
Okay. Are there any questions from the boards concerning, further concerning changes made to the site?
Not, not a question, but another request to put into the conditions for potential approval, if, if voted on by the board, that the applicant be required to submit a final and comprehensive set of site plans that include all changes agreed to in the process of the hearings, and that that be submitted along as an exhibit with the redevelopment plan prior to the delivery of a building permit.
Yes, that's, of course, that's acceptable.
Are there questions from the public?
I'm sorry, I have a quick question. I don't know who would answer this, but I'd like to ask a general question on trash receptacles. Where will they be? Is there a plan for trash receptacles? I don't know who's, does that, the architect, the...
Yes, we'll, we'll answer that, just give us a second.
Okay. Well, there's going to be a pocket park, if they can have a trash receptacle in the pocket park. I don't know, but people can have their cars.
Yeah, I have a question.
Everywhere.
I didn't think a trash would be this difficult, I'm sorry.
Okay.
When you mean trash receptacles, you mean like the ones that aren't pedestrian-oriented, where you can throw garbage in, correct?
You have a pocket park.
Yeah.
So sometimes folks worry, um...
Okay, so there are a few in the, in the parking deck area, there's four, two at the entrance and exit for pedestrians, the actual garage, and then there's two at the intersections right now.
Perfect, thank you, okay.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Yeah, back to the fencing on the Medical Arts site. I know there was some discussion about additional screening and fencing along the, on the eastward side of the parking lot. I think that's, not where the, not where the real Y buffer is, but where the narrow buffer is, and you're proposing a six-foot stockade fence?
Yes.
And how close does that come to the right-of-way line of Bay Avenue?
We propose it to within 10 feet of the, of the right-of-way line, and we can extend it further if it's, does not require variance.
Okay, so it will end at about where the, the lance, where the, where the perpendicular, in the corner, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll not go out to the right-of-way line and inhibit the visibility of the driveway from that lot?
That's correct.
Is that it, Tom?
Thank you.
Any other questions from the boards?
I guess I have one question, with respect to the, I'm not sure what slide it is, but I know there was a question raised at the last session from a resident who lived right on the border, on, on Bay, but right on the, the border, and the question was whether or not those six slots, those six parking spots that are designated, I guess, adjacent to his property, could, could be moved to a spot that inherently has more buffer to it, and I don't know if now is the proper time to raise that, but I think we discussed it, and that was a comment from the resident, so.
Yes, so we did look at that, the, in order for, to move those parking spaces out of that, out of this area, it would create a deficit of parking with regards to the code for the medical office building, so we would not be parked compliant with the code.
You couldn't move it to another section of the, say, that, that other quadrant tied...
With the valet parking.
He was, he was talking about taking off one on the east-west row above and one below, and sliding those six, over, not to move all.
Okay.
I don't think this is...
So would, would that be addressed?
He could pick up the width of the parking, parking space.
So removing those two parking spaces would still create a variance for our application.
So I guess the answer...
You proposing a six-foot slot?
Can you do anything, can you do anything with the...
We also are, excuse me, yeah, I just want to make it clear, there also is a six-foot high stockade fence proposed between those parking spaces and the neighbor's property.
Right, yeah, I, there is one there, yeah.
When, when you say it creates a parking deficit, is that to take into account all the parking in the valet?
Yes.
Yeah, it does take that into account.
Area, because you could...
But there is one thing...
So the, the one option that we can look at, instead of moving the spaces, is making them employee spaces, so that the turnover is minimized with regards to in and out for those parking spaces, if that's the board's wish.
Yeah, and we can sign those as employee-only.
Just, if we could go back to Site Layout Plan B, and more, less line than before, maybe I missed it, just described by what appears to be two rows of some type of planting?
Yes, those are proposed evergreen trees, six to seven feet high, there's a mix of species in that location. We typically try to do faster-growing trees, so in the range of two to three feet a year.
Is there somewhere on the plan that calls out the six to seven, that would be required to be installed initially?
It, it will on the revised site plan when they're submitted, that's our standard minimum tree height when, when planting, so that would be part of the revised plans when, for...
And what's the spacing?
Six feet on center.
Okay, so it's six feet, six to seven feet, you call every six feet on center?
And we stagger the rows, that, evergreen trees are triangles, so we make sure we kind of fill that space in with additional trees.
Other questions from the board? From the public?
Good evening, my name is Janelle Santos, AKA The Neighbor. I'd like to thank you for removing the benches, I appreciate that. Another question that I have is, will that area be fenced, or there's no fencing, it's just the two rows of trees?
I believe you have a fence currently, but...
I do have a fence, yes, I do.
But we did propose to provide a six-foot high fence at that location, so it's a, a stockade solid fence.
Okay, that sounds good. This side where it's on George Street, where the parking lot is, where you enter, I guess you enter on, where does that street again? Can't think of it. Shorewood, yes, and then you come down and there's George, you know, those two houses there, I know they're going to be demoed, that side of George, will there be a fence there, or is that just going to be open?
So it's Slide three in our set, and I apologize, it's probably the first sheet in the, the packet, just so I'm clear, do you mean the western boundary of the parking lot? There'll be a six-foot high fence at that location as well, but it will not extend along the street right-of-way.
It won't?
No.
That'll just be open with the trees and everything?
Yeah, to allow for visibility of pedestrians, and I know cars only can go one direction here, but to allow for visibility for people.
So they're going to go up, then they're not going to come, so George is going to remain a one-way street?
Yes.
So when they come out, they can either go up towards, I guess, the ER or come down George?
Yes.
Okay, another question that I have, so that area, is it public still, or is it, will it continue to be hospital property? Because it was, it was designated as a public open space originally, I don't know, is it still public?
The, the area is still shown for public open space, yes.
All right, can you just define that, what you mean by public? That means that everyone can use that space?
Yes, it's part of the redevelopment code, ordinance.
Okay.
There's nothing that defines that area that's being proposed in our plans, however, it doesn't say open space with signage.
Okay, because my, my, my concern, as always, is the employees of the hospital congregating in the area and smoking, and it's like, as, you know, a neighbor, who do I contact if I have an issue? Do I contact the hospital security, or do I call the Montclair Police?
It's still hospital property, correct?
Yes.
So, and the hospital has a no-smoking policy on all of their property, correct?
That's correct.
So it sounds like you would contact the hospital, right?
Okay, so that area will continue to be a non-smoking area?
Oh, yes, yes, it will be.
Okay, but there would be no benches, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Other questions from the public?
Other questions from the public?
Karma Lockman, I have another question. I'm concerned, obviously, about traffic flow in the area. So I was wondering, looking at site layout plan B, on the bottom part of that plan, I, okay, let me start from the beginning. So to get to the parking deck, a visitor would go along Sherwood Street, right, collect a ticket, and then go into the parking deck. And it looks like they can get out the parking deck, and this was what was told to me last time, by going on that little exit on Bay Street.
Yes.
So my question is, is there going to be an attendant at that exit who will collect the fee? Because right now I believe that exit is closed. How do you get, but I was in the parking deck, and the only way I could get out was to kind of go through and go back to Sherwood Street. So there would need, wouldn't there need to be an attendant at that exit there to collect the money?
So there's no change to the operation of the garage at that location under current conditions to the proposed condition?
Okay, so if it's open. But.
John, I can't, can't hear you.
Well, I can't have people talking on the.
So employees can come out that way, and there isn't a gate. There is a gate. So there's, it's badge-coded, so you can come out the deck and only employees can go that way. Is there a sign that says employee exit only? There is. Is there? You don't know.
So the answer is yes, there's a sign.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I'm concerned traffic flow. If you could get other traffic going through other than using Claremont Avenue and Will not Crescent.
Yeah, in fairness to this witness, if there's a specific question about that level of detail about existing condition, we have John Fromhold with us, who did testify at the last meeting, maybe, I think he might be in the best position to answer the sort of question that you have.
Okay, it's just I thought that I drove by and it was closed off, that's all. Anyway.
State your full name for the record, spell your last name, please.
John Fromhold, CEO of Mountainside. The employees that use the parking deck, as well as our physicians that use the surface parking, all have an ID badge, and the gate comes up when you badge out. So that's the exit that the employees and the doctors use.
Other questions from the public? Anything else from the board? No, it looks like we're good. Counselor?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Our next and last witness is Jennifer Stoughton, who will address the revised signage package that's been submitted to the board. And we'll call that package Exhibit A9. And Jennifer, as you go through and just refer to any of the slides in that package, just identify them, please, and by title.
I didn't bring it, I didn't put it on my computer. You don't, you didn't bring it with you? It was, but I didn't bring it to the meeting.
Everybody has hard copies.
We all have hard copies.
Do you want it on a thumb drive, Janice?
Pardon me?
Let me see if I can.
I have a thumb drive if you need one.
I can probably sit there and get it on a laptop? They don't have copies for the.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why I'm not getting the internet from my computer here.
You don't have a Wi-Fi connection?
Huh?
There's no Wi-Fi connection?
There's no Wi-Fi, so. So Keith, you can save this one.
Fire a guest.
He doesn't do it automatically? Sounds good.
Want to reset while we reset this?
Sure, we're going to have some time here. It's connected to the Wi-Fi, I think five bars.
Five minutes?
Sure, yeah, thank you. Thank you. So as I was saying, our next witness is Jennifer Stoughton, who put together the sign package for Philadelphia Sign, which has been handed out to everybody this, by the way, that sign package is A8, not A9. So Jennifer will present those plans as she goes through that, referring to each, in the different slides that you refer to, just refer to them by the number on the plan, because you may not be referring to every single one. So could we have the witness sworn, please?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Kindly state your full name for the records, spell your last name.
Sure, Jennifer Stoughton, S-T-O-U-G-H-T-O-N.
Your witness.
Great, thank you very much.
And keep your voices up with the fan, starting to get a little harder to hear you.
Got it. Okay, yeah, these mics are very good. Thank you for those. So could you please describe for the board the nature of your involvement in this project, specifically, of course, with respect to signage?
Sure. We have a relationship with Brand Active. You had met Sonia Ricardo's last month at the meeting. Brand Active had been hired as the design firm on behalf of Hackensack Meridian. And Philadelphia Sign, my company, is the sign vendor that has been hired to fabricate, install, and manage the program. So she had asked me to assist in the matters since we are fairly, fairly close. And I have been with Philadelphia Sign for a number of years, and I'm familiar with packages such as this.
Okay, and could you please proceed to describe for the board the nature of the sign package that's been presented with reference to these plans that I've called out as Exhibit A8?
Sure. So the exterior signage needs to incorporate a number of design parameters to be effective. So we tried to identify those design standards that will achieve the required level of legibility and visibility. And the sign proposal has been created to reflect the building's design, streetscape, and environmental conditions. Approach site triangles and departure site triangles are taken into consideration with regards to placement. And these areas will be clear of obstructions that might block a driver's view of conflicting vehicles or pedestrians. The most important aspect of designing effective signage in the healthcare industry is to provide for its visibility and clarity to the intended viewer. With clearly visible signage at all entrances, well-placed directional signs, and legible designations, we can improve productivity and enhance the patient experience. So that means fewer missed or late appointments, less distraction among employees from visitors stopping to ask for directions, and ultimately, a higher rate of visitor satisfaction. So our signage plan that Philadelphia Sign has proposed shows uniformity and consistency in the design for all sign types, so that users can recognize signage as part of the greater Mountainside campus. Consistent materials, font and colors, and overall appearance have, contribute to the cohesive sign package. And the proposed signage also complements the design of both the new medical office building and existing Mountainside Hospital. I do want to mention that all wayfinding signs meet both Montclair ordinance and the redevelopment plan with a common sense approach to wayfinding. In order to direct patients and visitors, wayfinding signage should work from the general to the specific. Standard DOT or Department of Transportation hospital trailblazers with indicating arrows will be added and/or replaced. As vehicular traffic gets closer, non-illuminated directionals will guide visitors to the emergency department, medical office building, hospital main entrance, valet, and patient visitor parking. Once on-site, the more specific language and signage will direct the patients and visitors to their final destination with regard to parking and safety. The size and overall height of all the wayfinding signage meets code, Montclair. The vehicular wayfinding signs are placed along streets within the hospital campus, placed perpendicular to the road, and face oncoming traffic. Placement and height maximize visibility, but no sign exceeds eight feet. And secondary directional signs are permitted at driveway entrances within a parking area to provide further guidance at decision points, and these do not exceed three feet in height as Montclair ordinance dictates. As you reviewed in the package, the new freestanding monument, N01, that can be seen on page, excuse me, sheet. Sheet three complies with the Montclair ordinance for sign in commercial districts, as does the wall-mounted sign that we'll see later in the package. We're proposing a double-faced, non-illuminated monument, as only one such sign is permitted at the visitor entrance and stands perpendicular. In addition, the monument meets the five-foot setback from the closest property line. The base will be landscaped with ground cover vegetation that will not grow in height to obscure the sign. And as a Montclair ordinance requires, the monument contains only the official name of the building. The maximum sign area is less than 20 square feet, and the overall sign height is less than six feet. The wall sign now meets the criteria of the Montclair ordinance, as well as the tenants of the redevelopment plan. We're proposing a 30-inch-high, non-illuminated aluminum pan with vinyl copy. And it's placed at the building facade to note the primary entrance and in view of major pedestrian walkways. So Philadelphia Sign would like to propose a comprehensive sign package, which meets the form and function of effective healthcare signage. All decision points, visibility, consistency, and patient experience have all been considered and cared for. And most importantly, the signs proposed meet Montclair ordinance, as well as the design strategy and vision of the redevelopment plan, all while serving the needs of the hospital, medical office building, and both Montclair and Glen Ridge communities.
So could you please provide us with a little bit of a review of the sign package that has been put together and presented to the board?
Sure. Can you hear me? Can I switch to this mic?
Is that mic working?
Yeah. Hello? Yep. Great. These do pick up well. Okay, so what we're proposing here is the, a non-illuminated monument.
You need to be referring to the slide number, sheet number.
Sure, this is sheet.
See at the top, it says sheet three of 23?
So this is sheet three of 23. It's a double-faced monument with vinyl copy. I refer to it as non-illuminated, but it will have external illumination. It's a three-foot-nine overall height, six foot and seven-eighths inch overall length. The monument area above the reveal is 19 square feet, and it will be placed at five foot with a setback from the property line. Copy is to the right, Mountainside Medical Office Building.
Yeah, I just wanted, before you go on to your next slide, I want to ask you something.
Yes.
Am I understanding this correctly, that the street address, letters for the street addresses are two and one eighth inches?
That is correct.
And is the street address for the office building also One Bay Avenue? Because that's the address that's listed for the hospital building on the other side, when you Google it. So, and somebody, you know, all of us won't have a problem, but people coming in from out of town?
Sure.
They're trying to find this building. We have all this nice landscaping, and it's above street level on Bay Street, right? And you have a sign on the building, but the sign on the building isn't that big. It doesn't have a street address on it. You have signs, as far as I can tell from the plan, you have monument signs that say, "Medical Office Building, this way." But the driveway entrance is in an intersection, a traffic signal intersection. So your attention is, is going to be somewhat diverted, because you have to observe traffic and the signal. And you have that one sign with two-inch letters that says One Bay Avenue.
Yeah, I think, I'd like to respond to that. First of all, I think you are correct regarding the, the street number that is commonly used address for the hospital, so we'll, we'll change that number for the medical office building, number one. And secondly, with respect to the, the size of the lettering, we're, obviously, we're flexible on that.
Sure.
And, you know, throughout, this is a fairly detailed package. I don't think the board is going to, you know, want a detailed presentation on 23 sheets. But I can certainly stipulate to you that the, if the final package before it's installed would be subject to final review by the board's professionals, so that everybody should be comfortable. That said, obviously, we want to give the board a good feeling about the signage and make a thorough presentation about it. But please, you know, note that there's no problem at all with our agreeing to have, there's no problem at all with any condition that would require that the final plan be subject to the review and approval of the board's professionals.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that it's, that, I think that's one of the key signs.
Yes.
On the premises.
Agreed.
I just want to make sure that if people can find it, you know, who don't know where it is. You know, the hospital is pretty obvious, where the emergency room is pretty obvious, you know, as you're coming. But if you're, you're looking for the office building, there are other office buildings that are adjacent to this. So, you know, if a good sign with, with good lettering that's visible from all directions, I think is key. And, and I, I want to tell you that I'm, I'm really happy about the way that you put the revised plan. It's very clear where they are. And this is my really only issue, or concern. It's not really an issue, but my concern, because I really couldn't tell with the way, with the positioning where the arrow is, and with the way that the vegetation is shown around it, to make sure that it's visible as you're coming from all directions, so that you can find it and make that turn into the driveway.
Yes, yep.
Without, you know, having any incident, so.
Understood. Yes, thank you. We, we did think, and when my company reviewed Brand Active's initial sign package that had some errors of omission, we felt that a single-faced freestanding monument for the medical office building, to let visitors know and patients alike that they have arrived, is very important to the, the patient experience. Are there any questions on sheet three of 23 before moving on?
Further to the point that he raised.
Yes.
Normally, the convention being that on one side of the street, if that's one, which is the hospital proper, the other side of the street, you need a number, number two.
Right, right. Yeah, I think exact copy of the sign would need to be flushed out with the hospital. I think we were just really looking for the local ordinance of Montclair and the planning board's understanding of overall size, illumination or non-illuminated, and with respect to placement.
I got it, but we found something that we need to deal with. It was accidental, it's nothing to do with the sign test.
I appreciate the input.
Let me just say this. The new medical office building is to be assigned a new street address, which will be other than One Bay Avenue. So they'll, they'll have to figure it out with the post office.
You'll let us know.
Nursing school had to have an address, which probably, it's like, you know.
I was just hoping for a point of clarification. You keep saying Montclair's ordinance in terms of the signage. Is there, is, or is there no Glen Ridge ordinance in terms?
It's a redevelopment plan.
So.
It was, it was inclusive of, Montclair's ordinance had the more specific language with regards to the freestanding sign. And then the sign package is inclusive of both the redevelopment plan and that ordinance, so that we could meet, really form and function with the aesthetics and ordinance as well.
So does this have to go to any of our, you kind of make reference to professionals. I don't know whether it's Montclair and Glen Ridge professionals.
We utilize the code, that's part of the.
So, is there any HPC issues?
And to clarify on the reference to ordinances, because in fairness to Ms. Stoughton, she's obviously not, not an attorney. The redevelopment, lucky for her, the redevelopment plan at Section 10.0 at SEC has a multitude of sections and pages dealing with signage, including wayfinding signage and building signage, et cetera. So we comply, that, that governs, and that redevelopment plan was, of course, developed in consultation with both Glen Ridge and Montclair's consultants and adopted by both governing bodies. So all the details are in there, and I'm sure Ms. Stoughton, you're confirming that what you've done complies with the redevelopment plan, correct?
It does. It meets the tenants of, of all.
Okay, thank you.
That would have been the better way to say it, that it complies with the redevelopment plan.
That's what I was confused about.
There shouldn't be any intention that one town's favored over the other. It's not like that.
But I will say, in fairness to Ms. Stotin, the redevelopment plan, for instance, does say that wall-mounted signs will comply with the Montclair ordinance for signs in commercial districts. So that's what the Glen Ridge governing body adopted, that language as well. So there was some reference in there to Montclair ordinances. But bottom line, we comply with the redevelopment plan, adopted by both governing bodies.
Awesome.
Great, thank you. So proceed, please.
Okay. Any other questions before I leave slide three of 23? So as I mentioned, moving on to the slide down there.
You're okay, you're on 423.
So this is four, this is four, slide four. It is N02, a single-faced, non-illuminated monolithic directional. Monolithic just refers to the shape. This is a new sign that we are placing at the, that would be the eastern corner of the new medical office building. And as it indicates, it's a single-faced sign, non-illuminated, indicates emergency, main entrance, parking, and the medical office.
Okay, will that be externally illuminated?
It is not.
No, it's not. Not illuminated at all. Okay, thank you.
Now with the placement of that sign, there's a six-foot fence proposed there.
Yeah.
That is correct. When, when I had initially prepared, when Philadelphia Sign had prepared the sign package, we did not have all the information from Bowler. So as Alan had stated, the site plan and the sign plan, the sign plan will comport with the site plan, and all those changes will be inclusive.
So Brad Bowler, for the record, again. I had mentioned in my testimony that that fence stopped about 10 feet from the right-of-way line, so that allows for a five-foot setback. And then this five-foot sign, so you'd actually see the sign. The fence would stop before the right-of-way line.
So can you show us from the pointer where exactly this is going to be on the property line?
It's going to be facing the neighbor, then? On the other side of the fence?
It is.
Yeah, how far away is it from the property line?
And like, he's, he's going to want to landscape the fence.
Yeah.
So.
N02 is, as it's indicating on sheet four, on the corner of the property of the medical office building, heading towards west-on Bay Avenue.
Right, so is that going to be on the east side or the west side of the fence?
I think Brad Bowler could better address that.
Catch to the fence.
No, I.
Brad Bowler, for the record, again. It will be on the west side of the fence, and we can agree to slide it approximately 20 feet to the west, further from the neighbor.
So is it going to be more in the area where the E1 sign is, or show the removal?
Sorry, there's a little background there. Could you say that again?
So if there's a sign marked E1, it's shown for removal, is it going to be a natter? You say it's going to be 20 feet to the west?
I think they should put it over here, that little green area.
You're referring to the existing directional? I believe that is further west-on Bay Avenue.
Right. We think it would move it west.
No, from this current position. So I think you had asked if it would be along the fence line. In this proposal, approximately along our property line, shared with the neighbor, we would push the proposed location about 20 feet to the west of where it's currently shown in this exhibit.
Okay, thank you.
Wouldn't it be easier to see the location of these fence, these signs on the site plan, so we can understand its relationship to the property lines and the landscaping?
Well, the final site plans will show that, but the, the sign package that's been submitted, for instance, go to sheet one if you could, please.
There's maybe two signs.
The sign package that's been submitted does show the location of.
But I can't say.
Of all of the signs. I mean, there's a lot of detail there regarding, and then each of those numbers keys into a sheet that provides you with more detail.
What it doesn't show me is the dimensions of the setback of the sign from the property line on each side and its relationship to the landscaping. I'm used to seeing the signage plan on the site plan, so you can see it, exactly where it's located and the landscaping around it.
Yeah, understood. As I said, there is a, there's an awful lot of quantity of signage here. And we're not, we're, I've tried to make it clear from the outset that to the extent there needs to be any refinements of location.
Let me say this. I apologize for interrupting, but I'm trying to be helpful. I think that there are one or two signs that are sensitive, and you're going right to the first two that are probably the most unique and the most sensitive.
Right.
We're concerned with the neighbor that's next to, that's where this sign's going, and that's totally beyond what we thought. I'm looking at Google Map where there's an existing sign now that's at identification. Is that, is it going to be in the same location as the existing sign? I think it's sheet six.
Yep. Thank you.
There you go. At least we can.
Yes, we can, we can put it in the same location as that existing sign depicted for removal on sheet six.
Chairman, is that good?
Yes.
Okay.
Should I go back? Are there, so N02, in summary, is a single-faced, non-illuminated directional. It will be located.
It's going to replace what?
Replacing the existing, remove only. That is correct.
I would advance.
That's a little later, okay. N03 is, again, a single-faced, non-illuminated monolith directional. That was placed in the rear corner of the medical lot. That would be the west lot, corner of the lot. And that was for oncoming traffic, for walnut and walnut crescent. That indicates emergency, main entrance, parking, and medical office buildings.
And that's on sheet four.
Correct.
Correct?
Are there any questions? Pardon me?
Sheet five.
Sheet five, excuse me, yes, sheet five.
Any questions on sheet five?
Is that replacing an existing sign as well?
That is a new sign. Moving on to sheet six, as we mentioned earlier, just circling back, that's an E01, that's an existing sign, and that's removal only. N04 is a new sign. It's a single-faced, non-illuminated post and panel. I am on sheet seven. This indicates the hospital entrance and the medical office building, and this is intended as pedestrian, and it was requested at an earlier meeting. It can also be informative and visible for vehicular traffic as well.
I have a question about this sign.
Yes.
Is this in the public right-of-way?
It is not.
Because it looks like it is on your detail.
Now, it's stipulated that none of them will be in the public right-of-way. So if, you know, the, from the level, from the scale, it may not be perfectly clear, but there will be a final package with all the sign. It was indicated earlier there'd be, one of the conditions, if approved, would be that finals, overall comprehensive site plans have to be submitted, which will include all of the sign locations and will show them out of the public right-of-way.
Because my other question is, how does, isn't there a wall along the property line here, and how this relates to that wall?
How it could be installed on the outside?
I don't know, because, again, there's a wall here.
Yep.
And I don't know where this sign is proposed.
Okay, yes. I think Brad Bowler can respond to that.
So it'll be, the wall's approximately a foot and a half to two feet high, so this sign will have to be raised up slightly higher than that, so the bottom clears the wall.
So it'll be behind the wall, or?
Yes. The wall's at the property line, in the right-of-way. So our property line essentially runs on the backside of the wall.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions on sheet seven?
Yes. Yes, sorry. Okay. Marked on some of these sheets, branded and unbranded, right?
Correct.
So on sheet seven, which is branded, it has the blue circle and the name of the hospital spelled out. Then on page five, it says unbranded, but there's that little circle, so that's, is that, so what, what's your definition of branded and unbranded?
I know. It's kind of semantics. On the unbranded, there is no mention of Hackensack Meridian. They have that kind of ghosting image of their burst, of the logo, so that it kind of recalls to mind that brand without being so overt. But it is not branded in the sense that it doesn't have copy that says Hackensack Meridian.
I see. Okay. So the, but the medical office building, is that not part of the Hackensack family of hospital?
That is not my.
But there's no branding on that at all. It's pretty generic.
Well, I can tell you that I was provided direction by all parties involved to include only Mountainside Medical Office Building at this phase.
Sure.
And it should not include the Hackensack Meridian copy, as the other, some of the other branded directionals do, again, just so that we could unify that sign plan and package as kind of a campus proposal.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Sure. Anything else? So moving on, N0, excuse me.
Just keeping, since that came up.
Yes.
Is that due to legal, a legal split in ownership? And how does that play out in terms of liability or enforcement for the plan? This is coming up as part of the one entity, but yet the building doesn't seem to have an official linkage to the hospital. Just clarify.
Yeah, I can respond to that, sure. As you know, the applicant, as I indicated at the beginning of the proceedings, we actually have two applicants before you. One Bay Urban Renewal LLC for the medical office building and the hospital with respect to the parking improvements and expansion of parking facilities on the hospital's property. So the medical office building undoubtedly will include area leased to the hospital, include doctors whose practice is based in no small part in the hospital, but it's not slated to be owned by the hospital. So, and clearly, that's consistent with the application having been filed with two separate entities before you.
So if there's a breach of the redevelopment plan or a breach of the plan for construction, will each entity, will the rights and responsibilities of each entity be spelled out very specifically in one?
Yeah, absolutely. Because there will be, as I indicated earlier, redevelopment agreement, it will have to be executed here, and will very clearly lay out the responsibilities of each of the parties with respect to the proposed development, very clearly. So if you could proceed?
Sure. So moving on to sheet, let's see, I should be on sheet seven. N04, we just discussed, and I'm moving on to sheet eight, which is N05. This is more informational. It's a single-faced, non-illuminated post and panel. It's kind of like a parking rules plaque as you enter the parking lot. Copy is specified to the right. It's really for informational purposes. At last month's meeting or in comments, I believe, the towing information was requested to be added, so we've incorporated that and kind of changed the layout to make the message a little more clearer. N06 is also a single-faced, non-illuminated post and panel. This is inside the parking lot, interior, and it's to direct traffic to both the main entrance and valet. Again, three feet overall height, meeting the requirements of the redevelopment plan. N07 is a double-faced, non-illuminated monolith directional. Again, it's unbranded. This is to indicate the emergency valet lot, and as requested, the handicap parking and push button for entry. N08 is a double-faced.
Just for the record, I was on sheet 10.
Yes, I apologize. Any questions on sheet 10? Sorry, I'm picking up speed here. Moving on to sheet 11. It's a N08, double-faced, non-illuminated monolith directional. Again, this is towards the valet lot on, that's, let's see. And that's across from the emergency department and the new valet lot. So you have emergency indicated at the red-band white copy, as is standard emergency valet lot indicated to the left. And again, the handicap parking. Sign copy for both sides A and B are clearly visible. Any questions on 11 before moving on? Sheet 12 is a standard DOT, I'm sorry, Department of Transportation sign.
That's N09 and N10?
That is correct. And N09 is just reserved handicap, and then N10 is specifically for those van-accessible with penalty of law plaque underneath. N09 has quantity 10, as Bowler's plans have indicated, and N10 has quantity of 3. Moving on to sheet 13, if that meets with everyone's approval. N11 is just a standard, again, Department of Transportation, standard stop sign within the valet lot, regulate traffic. Moving on to sheet 14 is an N12, single-faced, regulatory, compact cars only. And again, the sign plan will comport with Bowler's, Bowler Engineering's site plans, so the quantity of the compact cars will be indicated and specified with the final redevelopment plan. Moving on to sheet 15, N13, a single-face regulatory parking sign in the medical office building lot. N14 is, again, handicap with van-accessible parking. All of the parking signs are also installed in a typical bollard, as requested. Moving on to sheet 15, additional Department of Transportation handicap van-accessible parking signs.
That was sheet 16?
That was sheet 16. Sheet 17 are the stop and do not enter signs, as shown in the medical office building, with sign placement and quantity detailed. Moving on to sheet 18. This is a single-faced regulatory staff parking sign. Sign will be installed on the light poles that Bowler's plans have indicated. Poles will have two signs, one on each side, and that's just to specify staff parking. And then again, N20 on sheet 18 indicates compact cars only. And now we're getting into the detail of sheet 19 indicates N21, no parking loading sign, and again, the regulatory parking for staff and patients only with towing information. Copy is specified to the right. Moving on to sheet 20, that's an electric vehicle parking only while charging. That's a takeoff from Bowler's sign plan, as indicated on the full plans. N24 is the first surface, which means it's applied to the exterior or the outside of the glass, and there are a quantity of 3 proposed. This is on sheet 21. And it has the 10-inch-high band for Hackensack Meridian Health Mountainside Medical Center, and then the standard no weapons, no smoking, and video surveillance in use copy for safety and compliance.
Excuse me?
Yes.
So just to clarify, there will be access from all three points for individuals coming in for appointments, correct?
That is my understanding.
Is it possible to indicate on the glass or some way that there's patient access at these doors? I imagine that, well, I won't make a comment. Is it possible to?
Yes, we can. If it meets with the board's approval, absolutely. We can include that in vinyl copy. It's just additional application. Any other questions with regard to the vinyl on the doors? Yes.
This N25, is that going to be on all three sides?
Am I okay to move on? I was just making sure nobody had questions on N24.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. I'll move on if everybody's in agreement.
Did you mean N24 or N?
N25.
Good, so. Okay, so why don't we? Good, so, so why don't we go up to N twenty-five?
Happy to move on, so N twenty-five, this is the primary building sign, it's a non-illuminated pan sign, which is, as I mentioned in my introduction, it's aluminum with vinyl copy, it's a bent pan, there will be an LED light bar installed above the sign that will match the aesthetics of the building, and the copy area, as again, it's Mountainside Medical Office Building, it's two foot six high overall height on sheet twenty-two, and the overall length of nine feet. I know, I was in only the last meeting to your question, and I know that that was brought up, that perhaps a sign should be added to each of the three elevations where the entrance, and I believe that the proposed sign is placed only over the primary entrance.
I'm fine with it, I just didn't know if there was any reason that you wouldn't do all three sides, because everyone was saying it was supposed to be, supposed to look the same from each side, so that was why I asked the question.
Understood, I do recall that comment, so it does indicate the primary entrance, and as I mentioned, it's non-illuminated, the night detail just shows the halo illumination with the LED light bar over top.
Yeah, in fact, the redevelopment plan does provide that sign should be positioned on the building facade at the primary entrance in a view of major pedestrian walkways, so it's kind of typical for ordinances not to, you know, to try to control the number of wall-mounted signs.
If that answered your question.
No, I said I'm fine with it, I just didn't know if there was any sort of reason as to why there was not the other two signs, that's fine.
Okay, leaving page twenty-two if that's okay, and moving on to page twenty-three, a couple of the reviews from other parties had mentioned that there was a real need to either add to existing intersections or even replace, so at the request and the suggestion, we followed the Clermont Ave and Grove Street, Ridgewood Ave and Bay Ave, Baldwin Street and Highland Ave, Baldwin Street and Highland Ave, and Bloomfield and Highland, and again, that's really to direct traffic from the very general down to the specific, so that once you're on site, you're able to safely direct traffic and vehicular traffic and follow from greater distances, okay? Some do the existing, I noticed some of the existing, Mountainside, the language is kind of different, but we are going to propose that we standardize the language and just use this typical DOT H with no indication of the hospital, as you're coming from the broad, and the arrows to indicate path of travel. And I believe that is twenty-three of twenty-three, are there any questions on the Trailblazers before I conclude?
Yes.
Yes, oh, yes, Montclair has an ordinance, I don't know if Glen Ridge has it, and I don't know where this would fall out, it's not necess, and it would entail a sign, we have a no idling ordinance, a no idling specifically around public buildings, the signs are all around our schools, we have seven schools, actually eleven schools, I don't know if that would fall under this, of the no idling for three minutes around the building?
You can always suggest it.
I'm sorry?
If, if the two boards want to see that, you can always suggest it.
But we have that.
Sure.
Yes.
Blossom Glen Ridge, is it really necessary to have three signs on one corner of the residential area of Bay?
That was our recommendation, based, as I said, on previous comments.
Do you know where that sign where that border is?
We did, but.
For the residential area.
Yeah, but obviously, you're much more familiar with the area than I, we would follow the board's recommendation, we can certainly eliminate or add as needed.
I don't think I want those three signs.
Noted.
And which ones are you referring to, what specifically?
N twenty-six, N twenty-seven, N twenty-eight, all the same, Blossom Street.
Okay, understood, okay.
Okay, so Bay and Ridgewood, so pointing to the upper right hand on twenty-three of twenty-three up here?
N twenty-six, N twenty-seven, N twenty-eight.
Okay, so you're suggesting the elimination of those three at that location?
Ridgewood and Bay. The same on the fifth block.
Okay.
You don't want all three, right, just one sign?
Yeah.
Would you want one or two?
I don't know, you know, I would want all three of them.
Maybe the best way to handle that would be along the lines I suggested a few minutes ago, as just part of the general evaluation of the details here by the board's professionals, so we certainly have no axe to grind on that, if it's, if it's zero, one, or two, that's fine as well.
I don't think so.
Yeah, understood, and you heard from Ms. Stoughton that we're fine doing whatever you think is, whatever the boards think is best in that regard.
Councilor Schleger made, suggested that kind of got passed over, and that was to add no idling signs in accordance with the county ordinance.
We can do that.
Sorry?
We can do that.
Right, may I suggest that we have potentially two at the backside of the hospital, potentially three, given the size of the drop off on Bay Street, and then one or two at the new building, depending on the entrance?
Sure, that's fine.
At, at logical locations for best site.
So that's, just to be clear, the rear of the hospital indicated on the MOB property, and where else?
The rear of the hospital has a, you know, a C drop off, and probably two signs would accommodate that, given that cars pull up there and sit, sometimes wait, the front of the hospital has a couple of different drop off rows, and so probably three signs would be needed in that area, and the new building, one or two, depending on the layout.
Sure, no problem.
So, excuse me.
Sure.
Regards to sheet eight, I see on the sign there, the post sign, it says parking for medical office building staff and patients only.
Yes.
In prior testimony, we had heard that individuals may be parking in this location and then going over to the hospital, I was wondering if we might rephrase that, or was it the intent that we would indicate to folks, only if you're going to the medical office building, should you be parking here?
Can you, what was the initial, you, did you propose an alternate language, and I missed that?
No, so this is prior testimony that you did not give, so it may take someone else speaking.
Okay.
For this piece.
Gotcha.
But the wording on this sign on sheet eight says, yes, as you can see here, parking for medical office building only, and we heard prior testimony that some individuals may be able to park here and then access the hospital by intent, given the parking that needed to be provided for this plan, so.
I got it, I remember.
Yes.
What we're talking about is, we're talking about late night, people who don't pick up their key, the valet.
So it may be, it's really people that are parking in this lot and then going to the hospital?
Right, yeah, but the idea is that people parking in the medical office building lot should really be patronizing the medical office building, not, not the hospital, so I think that we, I don't think it was intended to convey that there could be some parking on the medical office building lot for, for the hospital property.
I think it was commented that, say, patients only, they think I'm a hospital patient, if you put the wording that.
Oh, okay.
Medical office patients and building staff, you might solve the problem.
Yes, yes.
It's in either direction, I just wanted to make sure the sign's consistent with the intent.
Yes, that's a good, that's a good point.
So, yes, that's a great suggestion, so to your point, what we're trying to do is convey the positive message, rather than say excluding hospital staff and patients, we're trying to be more specific and inclusive, so you're right, if we make that switch, then it'll modify the.
And it's just the second section that then, where it says all unauthorized vehicles will be towed at owner's expense, could lead to people feeling like this is an exclusive designation, not.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I don't understand, if someone parks there in the middle of the afternoon and walks over to the hospital, is their car subject to being towed?
I believe that, I would have to defer to those more involved with the project at an earlier date, but that was my understanding, that's the.
Yeah, John?
I can't see any reason somebody would want to do that, if it becomes an issue, then we'll have security take a look at it, but we have valet at the Harry's entrance for all the outpatient day surgery, we have valet at the ED, and we have valet at the main entrance, and it's all free, so if somebody chooses to park over there, if it becomes an issue, we'll just have to enforce it with security, I don't suspect it will be an issue.
The intent of this wording is that.
Yeah.
The person doing that would be subject to being.
They would be subject, ultimately, they could be subject to being towed, yes, in fact, I think we testified last meeting that the valet people are also on premises and can kind of help in enforcement of that, and let people know that that parking is reserved for the medical office building, remember, your redevelopment plan has very strict parking requirements for medical office building at five spaces per thousand, and we're complying with that, and we're not double counting, we're not counting the medical office building spaces to be used for the hospital, and we're not counting the hospital spaces to be used for the medical office building, so I think it's consistent with the redevelopment plan to have it set up the way we have, we all know in the real world, somebody parks there one time and walks over to the hospital, and not necessarily end up being towed, but on the one hand, on the other hand, yes, you should not be parking in the medical office building lot if you're not a patient or employee at the medical office building.
And did, so it will include visitors as well?
Absolutely, yeah, patients and employees and visitors for the medical office building can certainly park on the MOB lot.
So then going to sheet one, I believe it is, just around the vehicular wayfinding, I was trying to put myself on the streets, I'm coming in, and what do I actually see? So if you come in, I believe it's N zero five, which we just discussed, not a wayfinding sign, just designating whether you should be there or not, and then N zero six tells you to the right, sorry, we're flipping here, but zero six is on sheet, sheet nine indicates to you that the main entrance is to the right as well as valet parking?
That is correct.
Yes, so when you see that sign, I know this is a bit involved, but when you see that sign based on the fact that the main entrance sign is inset to the building, as we indicated it should be on the facade, the large sign?
Yes.
I don't believe you will see that sign coming around that corner, so let's say you proceed past N zero six and you go into the parking lot to the right, just under the office building, what indication would the individual have where they should go for the main entrance?
Well, I, if I'm following, that's a good point, if I'm following you correctly, you're going to have the NO one, which is the freestanding monument indicating the building itself.
Right.
And then as you enter the parking lot, you will, that NO six is your first sign visible, and that's exactly what will indicate the traffic pattern, the main entrance and the valet is to, is to the right, and that's for the patients and visitors.
And I may have missed a sign, but let's say you take a right there, down into the parking lot, what sign do you then see that indicates to you either the main entrance or valet that you're looking?
Yeah, one point two, remember, with the spec, as was presented on the new architectural plans, there also be a canopy, the driveway, so that will certainly help signify the main entrance to any vehicle entering the property.
And I believe to your point that in, again, the only meeting I had attended was the last one, but the decision was made from the valet parking specialist, that they would use a temporary kind of sandwich board that would meet with material and, you know, form and function, but it would be something that could be removed at the end of the night, and they would place it at the entrance of the driveway, and that would be basically catching that vehicular traffic that's already, number one, seeing that you're in the correct place, you're not going to be towed, you're parking in the correct parking lot, and then you've already directed the people to the main entrance through valet, and then that kind of temporary, what we call sandwich board, which is like an A-frame temporary sign on a sidewalk, would indicate for them to enter at the valet entrance under the port of cachet or canopy.
Yes, so the, I didn't want to add char, I don't think we want to add characters to the main sign, because the two solutions I was thinking of is you could have in parentheses "main entrance" underneath that sign, so they understand that is the main entrance.
To the monument?
Which I'm not suggesting, but it is an option.
Just want to follow.
Yes, the other one is to the, I'm not sure if I have the direction here, but let's say the lower right corner of the building, just in the lot, if there could be just a little bit, yes, right there and a little to the left, if there could be a sign that just indicates main entrance, or, I don't know if we want to indicate valet parking per se, because it's only part time, but just some way, because I could see many people coming in and doing a bit of a loop around the building, and even if they do see valet, no, I need to get to the main entrance, and I just, there's also not, you know, there could be people walking through the parking lot, as there's not, you know, sidewalks around the parking lot, so, and then they're looking to the left, not seeing main entrance, they're continuing to drive.
Understood.
It just was a concern, and we have plenty of signs, but if we could just have one more there, I think it would be helpful for people navigating the parking lot.
Okay, and so would that sign then indicate just the main entrance?
I think main entrance is fine, we'll have the temporary signs for the valet.
For the valet, okay.
Are you going to be providing the A-frame sign for the valet, or will the valet be providing the sign?
I would have to defer, I believe the valet group is going to be providing that as it's kind of specific to their craft.
Because it wasn't included, so.
Yeah.
Is it appropriate to come in and have a sign that says self-parking, because I'm coming in, I see the main entrance, I see valet, if I want to park my own car, where do I go? Is that going to be obvious?
I think.
I always go valet, but for.
Right.
It's free.
Sure, I think we can take that under advisement and at the request of the board, sure.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, because obviously, it's not 100% valet, and some people would prefer not to deal with the valet even if it's free, so we can include a reference to self-parking, that's a good point.
I just have a general question about the whole signage plan, because we're not seeing the signage on the hospital side, we're just seeing the new signage for the office building, and.
Uh, no.
I don't know if that's within, you know, for us to really understand, because when I see the, the first signs that, the right page number here, like on sheet four.
Yeah.
You're saying main entrance, but you mean main hospital entrance, you don't mean entrance to, because then it says medical office building.
When you, are you referring to sheet four specifically with your question, or do you mean, initially, and the reason why I'm just asking for clarification, I had initially, my brain tuned into the building sign, but I think you're referring to some of that directional sign coming up on.
Right, because we call, when we say main entrance on the directional signs, we mean, we mean main entrance to the hospital.
That is correct.
But then, when, I guess, there's other signs that say main entrance, and it means to the office building.
Yes, and the rea.
You're already in the lot, yeah.
That's correct.
Because you're already.
It's really, that's what, you're hired, but I was going to say was, from general to specific, that's exactly right, once you're already in the lot, and you've indicated that you're at the right place, you're correct where you should be, you're parking in the correct lot, I think by this gentleman's comments, he meant main entrance as in where I'm going to enter the building.
Right, so I just don't know, by not knowing what other signs are already there for the hospital, you know, how these relate to those signs.
Right, to my knowledge, this is inclusive of the entire sign proposal, when you say there are other signs to the main entrance or medical office building, have you seen some other indication in previous submittals?
No, I just, I don't know if there's existing signage for the existing hospital.
Well, the, remember, this, this application relates to the redevelopment area and this redevelopment project, so what, what we're depicting here, in fact, as you saw on. So what, what we're depicting here, in fact, as you saw on the, on the cover sheet, there's numerous signs referenced throughout, you know, this new part of the campus on both the MOB parcel and on the hospital's expanded parking area. So the, obviously, there could be other signage on the hospital outside of the redevelopment area, but that's not part of this application. But I think it's fair to say that when you put together this sign plan, you took into account existing signage as well. Is that correct?
Yes, now I'm following you, I'm sorry.
Do we put a little blue square with an H on it on the top?
I'm sorry?
On the top where it says main entrance? That would differentiate the medical office building.
Oh, understood, on the directional that we're looking at on sheet four. So, to clarify, okay, so to answer your question, in initially, and again, it was kind of a, just a whisper of a sign proposal that you had, that Brent Active had proposed in the last meeting, it did include signs that were already on campus and the decision as you had made was, the decision was made to only propose the areas for redevelopment, but the existing signs at Mountainside Hospital that fall without, outside of the redevelopment plan will also be addressed. And that language and all of the same kind of tenets of wayfinding will be followed throughout, so there will be a consistent message. And we have already been contracted to do that.
Okay, so that's what I wouldn't understand.
So we will make absolutely sure that, yes, and that's very important, that the language is consistent so that you don't lose your.
And it's not overkill. I mean, I don't need, you know, one across the street and one on the other side of the street.
Correct, yes, but you don't want to lose a person by changing the message. Agreed.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Again, Joe Fishinger with NV5. I have a number of technical comments, which I believe you've said you'd address, but can you explain the reasoning, I think it's sheet 10, with signing the emergency valet lot? I'm a little confused as to exactly what that is, and since it's, the people driving to it are the valets, why is, why is it necessary to sign that lot since it's not of use?
Okay, so that's a great question. And I did just receive, I believe you are Joe Fishinger, NV5, these are your comments, yes. Okay, so I did receive these this morning and I apologize. I did try to address them in my own thoughts and comments, but, so you're referring to, let me just get to that sheet for the boards. So you're referring to N-07, correct?
Yes.
Yes, N-07 is for everybody's edification on sheet 10. So the idea here is that this is to indicate the emergency valet lot. This whole area, we felt, does need to be identified so that visitors and, you know, basically visitors will not park in that area. And we talked about having a positive message versus the negative message of the do not park and who can. I think that because it's an emergency valet lot, it needs to be indicated and we took into consideration the comments from the last meeting, that the hours needed to be stated, and then the handicap parking had to be added as well. I think that if you are, say, rushing into the ER and using the emergency valet, you would like to know to indicate to your loved ones or whomever comes to retrieve your belongings, I have no idea where my car went, it's somewhere in the emergency valet. So we did think, you know, in our estimation, it needed to be indicated somehow. The verbiage can certainly be changed or discussed, but again, it does need to have some indication of what the function of that lot is to indicate its operational use.
Do you think some other label other than emergency would be appropriate for that lot? For example, you could call it the flower lot or the purple lot. Quite frankly, emergency to me means you're going to the emergency room, the la, I would hope no one would want to drive into that lot thinking they were going to the, they had to park there for the emergency room.
Sure.
So I'm just asking if you can consider different language and different naming convention.
Yes, absolutely. We will take that.
Yeah, we definitely would consider that, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Part of that overall condition I alluded to.
And then we'll just mark your, your memo from 4/22/18 as V8.
Other questions from the public? Anything else from the board? Counselor, I think we're, we're good with this witness?
Yes, thank you very much.
Good job.
So that concludes the presentation of our witnesses in support of the application.
Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on the application? Counselor, it doesn't seem to be.
Thank you.
Do you want to make some closing remarks?
Yes, I would appreciate the opportunity to do that. I will be brief. First, I definitely want to thank the boards for going above and beyond the call, arranging meetings like the one we had tonight and prior to that, last month, and for that matter, prior to that, the numerous meetings that we had with your various professionals and putting together the redevelopment plan, which provides, of course, the basis for this proposal that's before you tonight. I also would like to add that I think as you saw throughout the testimony, we have made every single effort, and I think successfully so, in complying with the letter and the spirit of the redevelopment plan. By the same token, we have also tried to be as flexible as we can to address various questions and comments and a few concerns that were raised by members of the public and members of both planning boards and your professionals. And I would hope that you agree that we succeeded in that respect in addressing those comments and in, in no small part also, as I indicated earlier, in being prepared to abide by a condition that would make a lot of the ultimate details, such as those in the signage plan and the overall comprehensive site plan, subject to final review and approval and sign off by your professionals before issuance of, of a building permit. A lot of effort has gone into this plan. It's been a journey and we hope that we're coming now to a very important and successful close to this chapter of that journey. And I would respectfully ask that the boards, both Glen Ridge and Montclair, see fit to approve the applications that were submitted, both by One Bay Urban Renewal LLC as well as by the hospital.
All right, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
I think the next stage that we have here is that our respective boards will review this hearing and at our next respective meetings and make our decisions. I'd ask the planners for both boards as to what dates we would expect those proceeding on.
Well, you want to have two separate resolutions or one resolution that's approved by both boards?
How do we do it last, how do we do it last time? It seemed to work okay.
Well, we didn't have a, we didn't have a site plan, we just had the redevelopment.
But we did have a, we did have a resolution, though, right?
Yeah, we had two separate resolutions on the redevelopment plan. I want to make sure our conditions are consistent.
I think that's important.
Yeah, maybe we could go through the conditions.
Sure.
I know Glenn, he's got some really good notes, so.
Is that okay? I'll go and then you, you know, let's, let's work them. Glenn, you're listening also, right? Open me up. Okay. One, the applicant represented that the roof AC units will be state-of-the-art and will comply with the sound ordinance and will be screened so that it will not be seen through the street. Number two, the applicant must post sufficient escrow for the municipalities to hire a LEED accredited professional to review the plan submissions and construction drawings and monitor construction process to determine compliance with the lead proposals. For the purposes, purposes of this approval, the applicant represented that it can achieve a minimum of 50 points, which is the equivalent of silver level lead certification, and that's required by the redevelopment plan. Three, the applicant is to comply with the board's engineer and traffic letters. Four, deliveries and. Sorry, number three, I'm sorry, number three. Applicant is to comply with the board's engineer and traffic letters. And I'll email you this after, so. Okay. It's more important you listen. Deliveries and sanitation pickup shall be limited to the following hours. I got a blank. Does anybody want to fill that in? No? Or do you care? Should I take that out?
Seven AM to 9:00 PM? Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, that's fine.
7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Okay, got it. The trees that are to be saved must be marked. It was represented that the hospital's security will police the parking lot of the office building. Is that, do we want that? Okay. It was this representation. The boards are desirers of Essex County taking responsibility for the signalization of the intersection at Bay Avenue. The signal is to be designed in accordance with Essex County standards and shall be powder coated. Eight, the applicant will be responsible to provide a crosswalk on Bay Avenue should the county determine that such a crosswalk, such a crossing is necessary near Sherman Avenue. Nine, the applicant is to add fencing along Bay Avenue to limit, to limit pedestrian crossings mid-block. The Glen Ridge HPC is to review and approve the look of the proposed fencing. At the moment, it's posted rail, but I'm not going to include that. Ten, do we want a condition regarding picking up cars after hours? There was some testimony that, there was a whole procedure for that. I don't know if anybody feels it's necessary.
No, I don't think.
Take it out?
Yeah.
Okay. Eleven, the applicant agreed that a construction, traffic, and staging plan are to be added to the redevelopment agreement in consultation with the police departments and the board's traffic expert, so that at the time of construction, we handle the parking, the circulation properly. Eleven, the applicant is required to submit a comprehensive site plan showing all commitments, promises, and changes agreed to throughout the process and confirming compliance with the redevelopment plan, which is to be reviewed, approved by the community's professional staffs. I have prior to the issuance of the building. Is that okay?
That's correct.
I would love to have it done prior to, prior to memorialization, but I don't think it's realistic. Okay, it'll never happen. All right. Twelve, the six parking spaces abutting 289 Bay Avenue are to be signed for use by employees only. Thirteen, the new medical office building is to be assigned a new street address, but will be another address other than, which will be other than another, other than One Bay Avenue. Fourteen, no idling signs are to be added to the plan as suggested at the time of the hearing. I don't have the specific, I didn't pick up on the specific locations.
Three at the main hospital entrance, two at the rear of the hospital, and one or two at applicant's discretion at the entrance of the new building.
That's what I have. The only other thing I would note is, just want to make sure that everyone's clear on this, I don't have any clue what the new office building's going to be called from the, from what we heard tonight, so just, just so you're alert to that.
The, you said engineer, and you said there would be points of engineer.
And traffic.
And traffic. And with respect to the evaluation of the intersection at Walnut, Walnut Crescent, was that part of the, was that part of the traffic consultant's comments?
Yeah.
I don't.
Does the NV5 April 22 report?
And they agree that they would, would evaluate that?
So is that okay? That's good enough?
That'll be included.
That's up to our traffic expert to make sure he, he stays on that, on that bone. He's been pretty good about it so far, I think he will. That's all I have.
And what about the, what about the fine signs? Have you just, we heard that there's going to be some tweaking of them?
I'm assuming based on the testimony that we heard that they're going to have, our staff's going to have to look at the transcript and make sure that it comes up on the plan the same way, unless you want to, we've got plenty of time, we can make a detail.
I would just, you know, I'm just concerned again about visibility and legibility for drivers and that there be, you know, adequate evaluation of the signage to make sure that they're both visible and legible, you know, for the purposes that they're designed. And, but, shall we, who will make that evaluation?
Mr. Fishinger? You're on our team, right?
Yes.
Why not? I think we should have his assistance.
Can you handle that one?
I'm sorry. You may have to say it again, Mr. Trump.
What we're talking about, we're just talking about, you know, all the wayfarer signs and monument signs and such that are identifying where the buildings are, and there are several of them that are really meant to be seen, you know, by people in, not walking, but in traffic and driving their cars so that they know where to go and just making sure that those signs where they're, where they're actually going to be put up are both visible and in terms of, you know, unobstructed views and also legible in terms of the print on, it seemed on some of them, it was, the lettering was kind of small, to make sure that, you know, it's legible for people driving so that they can read the sign, you know, while they're driving, you know, within enough time to make a turn if they have to.
The, the MUTCD, which is, you know, the Fed's guideline for signs, has guidelines for, you know, how high a letter needs to be at a certain distance when you're driving. We can check their plans against those recommendations to make sure that their, the signs are large enough to read, but not so large that they're obtrusive.
That sounds good. Sounds reasonable. Anything else?
How do we handle things like photo documenting the adjoining houses or the nearby houses during demolition? Like Mr. Bowler testified to that?
Let's, let's, let's cook it up. Tell me what you want it to say.
That the, I guess that the contractor will photo document the adjacent homes to ensure that houses are not damaged and remain clean?
Will photo what?
Document.
Photo document. Prior to construction.
Yes.
Prior to demolition.
Prior to demolition, correct.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the sort of thing that can also go into the redevelopment agreement.
Well, we're going to include it.
Right, here and then, fine.
All right, let's get it done. That's simple, let's get it done.
Sure.
And also, all plantings will be native species and that the pyrus trees will be removed from the plans?
What was the, what was the offending species?
Pyrus. I believe it's a type of pear tree.
PYRUUS?
Yes. PYRUUS, yes.
Okay, all plantings will be native species and the iris.
Pyrus.
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 Yeah, my pronunciations are bad, are to be removed from the plan. Are to be removed from the plan.
You have the, the powder coated street light.
I got that.
Oh, did you? Sorry, I missed that one.
Yeah, that's okay. That's what we're doing. We're putting it together.
We'll have the HPC, how about Glen Ridge HPC, when they look at the fence, decide on the color?
Of the fence?
Of the, no, the street light.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
The signals be designed in accordance with Essex County standards and shall be powder coated in consultation with the Glen Ridge HPC.
Now, are we just using a standard light, street traffic signal pole and its color, or is it a decorative pole that's colored?
If there's something that the HPC would recommend that is suitable to meet Essex County standards, I would assume that that would be the best of both worlds.
Okay.
I agree. Is it okay with the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, if I may real quick, Essex County standards are typically standard aluminum poles, powder coated black. If you want, if they want some sort of decorative poles, that's going to have to be contingent on the county because they typically don't permit decorative poles like that.
Right, until, so if they don't permit it, then they don't permit it. We can ask the question, all they can do is say no. Right? Yeah. So. Anything else? Did we get it all? Anything on the street furniture? Did we want anybody taking a look at that? The, was it some garbage cans and benches? Like, do you want to go with the...
Want to have the HPC take a look at that?
Okay.
Yeah.
Fine with that.
Since they're making the, they're making some of the aesthetic decisions, let them reflect. Let them point on that.
They're not here to object. I have the garbage cans and street, and, not street trees. Garbage trees and benches are to be reviewed by the HPC. Glenn, I got to take you back to this. Who's paying for the, who's paying for the traffic light?
Developer is.
Okay. Thank you.
Somebody want to talk to that?
I guess not. We don't vote tonight.
What's it? I think, I don't see why not. I mean, I didn't, I had no, my feeling was, I didn't think we'd get through everything tonight, and I think that, I was thinking that you would have time to reflect on this and we'd do the conditions, but we now have the conditions. We're all here, may as well advance the project. I don't see any...
I think it, it looks like we are prepared. Are you guys prepared to proceed? If not, if so, we can.
Hi. Okay.
All right, well, I guess we, we can do a joint resolution or a joint motion at least.
Well, I think what we should do is do two separate motions. We, I don't know who's going to go first, and this is one of those projects that is reflective of the redevelopment plan, so I'd like you to put some, a positive comment or two on the record, but I don't think you need to put a whole lot on the record in this instance. Do you want us to go first? You want to go first?
Sure.
I gave you a choice.
I think we'd rather report, go ahead and, and, and a motion, and a site plan, and all such type of issues.
Outlined by Mr. Galvin.
Can I just ask a point first? Do we have to, remember, the public, Glen Ridge, that was first?
We've never had, you know, I thought we had represented to people.
This was advertised in Glen Ridge, right?
This meeting and the continuation, but we were questioning, do we need to have a separate planning agreement?
This is a...
This is it?
Nothing separate.
No.
No.
Only adopt the resolution, there would just be on our, whether it would appear or not, we would have to get together to adopt it.
And it was noticed for Glen Ridge.
It was. It was. It was.
Notice of Glen Ridge, meeting, to have posted accordingly.
My question is, I, I thought there was some discussion that action would be taken at a Glen Ridge meeting, so I don't know whether people from the public would have thought they would have another shot.
The notice covered this meeting.
Right. This is the public meeting. Now, the board, if the board feels that you need additional time or additional meeting to consider the application, that's really up to the board, but I think the applicant has presented everything. You have...
Unless the board has questions for the applicant.
Or whether there's public that, you know, with all the conditions listed, haven't had it, that aren't here, or that they could have been.
But, they could have been here. Public has been noticed.
Right. And, and I guess technically, at this point, the hearing is closed. Testimony's closed. Hearing is closed. Comments were asked for and as, received such as they were.
Yeah, that's to make sure we didn't say...
This is a public meeting of both boards.
Yes.
It just happens to be located in Montclair. We could have gone back and forth between both halves.
And I think last time, when we were talking about the redevelopment plan, we had some issues that we wanted to discuss individually about, I guess, refining it and such. We're, I guess we're beyond that now. We really, really don't have those kind of issues to consider separately. It's whether or not we want to, you know, move this plan along.
So we have a motion. Is this...
Michael? Michael, again, can you clarify, like, this is the first part of the meeting, we had the other meeting.
Yeah, so you can't be...
So, should I do any other or just abstain in general?
Just abstain.
Just abstain. So again, I, I would suggest that the board consider a resolution granting site plan approval in accordance with the plan submitted and subject to the conditions outlined by Mr. Galvin.
We have a motion.
I offer such a motion, if you'd like.
I second that motion.
And Mr. Dawson, you will not be voting, okay?
Right.
Just, it's not abstention. If you abstain, it counts as a vote, so just trust me on this. We're not voting.
Okay, I just...
You're fine.
Comments from the board?
Questions?
They?
We'll vote.
Okay, so this is a...
We're, we're fine.
Do you want any more positive comment for the record?
No, we're fine.
I think you found the plan generally complies with the redevelopment plan.
Right.
That's, that'll work.
All right, so we have a motion to the second. Fields?
Yes.
Aigiri?
Aye.
Counselor Preston Marrow?
Aye.
Robert Marrow?
Aye.
Murphy?
Yes.
Tarama?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Chair?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, it's tough.
All right, and I'll make a motion that we approve the application, subject to the conditions that have been recited on the record, and finding that the plan is as currently submitted meets the requirements of the redevelopment plan, we're satisfied then.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'll run, call the roll. Vice Chair Brodak?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon?
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Rooney?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmer?
Yes.
And Chair Wynn?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, all right. Carrie?
Yes.